Been doing that.
So, welcome to tonight's town of Candice Board of Appeals Public Hearing. I'm Matt Bot and I'm serving as Chairperson this month's meeting. The other members of Board of Appeals are Diane Morning, Linda Morehouse, Jesse Halli. We have a quorum of the board, so we need to have at least three of the five members must be present. Everybody's here. So, the majority. Ruling will take place, the three people vote in one direction or the other. Secretary Stephanie Cook, during the portion me opening the public comment, please speak clearly, give your name and address to the secretary. She needs you to speak or spell her name, she'll ask for the certification. And again, we have this run, so that helps. Purpose of the Board of Appeals is to determine whether a request to exception to the town's zoning law is appropriate. The board is get about the facts of the case and relates a particular piece of land involved, the by the calling standards contained within the text of local law. There are several possible outcomes tonight's hearing. The board can hear the evidence tonight, decide tonight, or the board may recess the hearing to a later date and decide that. The decision is always made public by a roll call vote, and the letter confirming the decision is sent to the applicant. The decision can take the form of approval of the requests presented in the written application, or approval of specific conditions, or denial. In each case, the board must support its decision with findings or facts. An appeal from the decision can be made to the appropriate nearest state circus court by either applicant or aggrieved neighbor under Article seventy-eight procedure. So. Start off with code enforcement officer. Explain what we have.
Okay, Mr. Blackmeyer came in and requested a permit for a lean-to up the side of this barn. Um, I believe was two feet from the property line. Um, I did submit a plans where it said four feet, but it's actually two. And it would be up, up next to uh, what looks like a greenhouse, right? Um, it wouldn't go past the greenhouse, um, so there's already like a a small bump out there.
Greenhouse.
Could you?
So, let me. On your property or? Yeah, yeah, so he's got a, he's got a.
Oh, you got a better.
Also, I mean, we can, I'll explain it a little better.
So, you Mr. Blackman?
Yes, I am.
Last time I saw you was about forty years ago, and you had a halo on.
Yes. I still have some around.
I'm glad to see you're doing well though.
Existing greenhouse. Um, and then they would put them on, they'll lean to. Um, so he, he applied for permits, put the birdhouses in because that wasn't approaching on the property line, but if he puts the the lean-to, we bring it up to here. And did, and then it would bring it out to the end of the barn. So, listening in the same direction, the profile of the, of the roof. It's just the need to, we're gonna tie into that. Just for a garden area out the backside of the greenhouse and etc.
So, how far away from the line is the current? Birdhouse?
Oh, uh, ten, or well, it was more than ten, it was like thirteen. Where on here is that? Is, just try to wrap my head around where on this map are we?
Yeah. Right there.
This side, okay, south side of us. And there's a building right there.
Yes.
Okay.
What does the neighbor have that little yellow, what do they do with that little yellow building that's?
You know.
Kind of right next to you there.
Basically, it's just kind of storage.
Oh, okay.
Actually, we both have any of those.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, they're, they, um, are, had given, they've given it to a couple neighbors down, and they're in the process of getting a permit to move it.
Move it, okay. Is that some one thing I noticed, I didn't know if they used it like a guest bedroom, like some of the places do like a little guest house without anything and.
Yeah, he, I, I believe he's the neighbor.
Okay, I just, when I was down there looking, I'm thinking, okay, that, that, it just come, brings it out close to that, and that's that was my biggest question there, and you know, the landscaping and everything that you got, basically nothing's really gonna show.
Right.
As far as from, you can see it actually better from thirty-six than you can from.
Yeah.
Francis Shores.
So, it's actually on the, right on the backside.
It's on the backside, yeah, it's on the, it's on, it's between Francis Shores and County Road thirty-six.
Long is the lean-to, how wide is the leaning?
Right here, it's fourteen feet.
And it's. So, you wanna build a fourteen feet here, this way?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just looking for a line that tells distance, that's at an angle, it doesn't have a line on the bottom of the distance.
Coming out, so the existing barn is fourteen feet? Coming out is fourteen foot, the length is fourteen foot.
It's fourteen.
Right.
It's coming out somewhere's around nine foot eleven. And then it would be the overhang, which is being over.
Okay, so these boxes is the property line?
And this roughly is property line.
Okay, so these are.
Building two feet from the property line.
What's that?
That brings it to two feet from the property line?
Well, no, so he, he originally applied, and it was four feet, but then I told him he had to put the overhang. You know, and anything protruding out.
Yep. That's what I just said.
Yeah, then it was two.
That's where the difference is, yeah.
So, we're dealing with two feet closer to the property line?
Two feet total.
Up the air, right, the two foot closer is actually the overhang, not, not.
It doesn't matter, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know, but.
That is the case, and makes the difference, I could eliminate the overhang.
Well, right now, you're many feet past the two foot.
Yeah, I, I measured from the box when I put that, that my actual string line down. I thought I put on the application that it was six feet.
I don't know. Oh, yeah, you had four, and then I came down and measured. It was, it was close to four and some change.
Is this Westlake Road up here? Or is this Francis Shores?
What?
That is Westlake Road.
That is what, okay, so you're.
Oh, no, there it goes, that is Westlake Road.
And orient myself here.
Just to throw it out there, is there any particular reason that it couldn't go on the west side of the back?
It's just a different purpose, and I'm trying to get that done before I do all the insulation inside around the barn, I want to make sure that it was in there. Years ago. I know the codes were much different back when they built the barn, and then it put the greenhouse. And it was basically making sure the neighbors were good, and at the time, I didn't have the need nor the money purely to go ahead and and I wish now I could.
What will they say, hindsight's twenty-two?
Yeah, cuz the, supposed to be ten feet, anything less than that, then we have to, then we have to give them the variance part. And, um, once it gets less than five feet, less than half the distance, then it becomes an issue. And in this case, you're two feet from the line, any water coming off your, your roof, it's pretty much gonna enter your neighbor's property. And that's something that, um, we've had a lot of complaints, a lot of problems down the lake west.
Water is a condition, if a gutter goes out into a drainage tile. Because I have, I have the ability to pipe into a drain and put a gutter.
Really helps, that certainly helps.
I mean, it's nothing but yard next to it.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, somebody that, that imposes on somebody else cuz they can't build in ten feet of it, so now if you're giving, taking, you know, two feet off of their side, then they, they gotta be eight feet away to put something, so that's, so that's where that gets into that whole, but.
Relive the west willow.
Yeah, exactly. So, do you understand what I was just talking about? Yeah, so the state law, you have ten feet to one structure, so when you, you're taking away from their ability, and it's not you, it's the property, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand, so, um, is there any reason why this needs to be that wide on that side?
Well, I do plan to set some things up in there underneath it, and it was just again, with our overall plan that we've had for years, that realized that we had the issue with, with this, it's just been an overall plan. Again, later on, I wanna if I decide to stay and keep the property, then there probably will be another addition off the back, it was a pole barn, so I can do another section in that lower area, but that's meant for other items, right? Spend more money.
Yeah, cuz I mean, it's, you clearly have room in other places to put, if this is for storage, to put storage of our encroaching on your neighbor's property. Or to boost your neighbor's progress.
Um, you had put in here that your neighbor would sign an affidavit that he wouldn't have any problem with this variance. However, it's, and would that be, uh, feasible, or would not, because the variance goes with the property would not make any difference?
No, it's a, a different neighbor came in, I mean, we take, we take into consideration neighbors.
No, I just.
You're gonna get an opportunity to speak to.
This back property line. What, is there somebody else behind you, or is it just the way it's coming out, and that's actually the county property?
Yeah, that's actually the person that lives in this house owns both of those lots, so he owns up behind us.
Okay, that's just, that's, I seen the line going across.
Yeah, it was, it was, um, that whole back field was bought up and kept and and everybody tries to take first option with somebody else down there to make sure that the property stays within the area, but I know he owns both of them.
That goes up. Yeah, that's got a pretty good slope, that's got a pretty good, but there's quite a bit of space between there before County Road thirty-six.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's why we had probably questions about those kind of things.
Yeah.
And then we split up in different lines.
This, is this part of the barn?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already there.
Kind of goes.
There's already, that's, that's already enclosed in a roof and stuff that's there.
Yeah, I, I think we did it twenty-five years ago.
That's already there, so it's basically coming out to almost to the same spot that already is.
The same, the same distance he's asking for.
Was there a variance in that?
No.
This one probably shows.
Right, that's the greenhouse here.
So, he's bringing it basically out to the same distance of the greenhouse.
Yeah, just farther, just coming farther down a lot.
Yeah, coming more towards Francis Shores.
Got you. Okay, so just, this looks like you just have a small bubble, but that's actually
That's actually.
Trees are in between them.
Yeah.
Harbor by, whatever they're, I mean. I see.
Oh, okay, all right, now I see, could you see, all you see is that.
Yeah, all you see is this little piece here.
Now, that's actually.
Knows the picture.
Okay, went down here, please. Yeah. Just wanna see the, the way it.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yes, okay. It's, okay, like I say, I was, I was down on both sides of it today.
So, this is already there?
Yes.
And then, but I meant it's out.
Yep, almost the same.
Okay, so the overhang you want to come out as far as this one also?
Yep.
Will you be attaching?
No, the trees in the way.
If my wife is sitting here, she would tell you that there was a plan B, but no.
I figured she'd tell you if they cut it down.
Okay. All right, that makes a difference, looking at a different picture, aspect of it.
Okay.
Gotta get our backs on.
Yeah, no, that's why pictures always really handy, because you can, you only see so much detail in these aerial.
That's, that's nice to have those pictures of it drawn on there, we don't usually get anything that nice. Yeah, and I, I did go down and measure too, and with, with the lines where the original stakes were for the survey, so it, the measurements were pretty close to exact from the survey map.
So, I'm assuming then, this piece, this note that I have has to do with the percentage of space used on the lot?
Yeah. Yep, I, I just.
Okay, so we're way down.
I just wanted to mention that that was a percentage used on the lot, cuz it didn't exceed.
Fourteen point seven eight.
Good.
So, that's a bit there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and we're like everybody else with all those lines up in the behind, I ended up, I had three D's.
Yeah, I know you do.
When we did that, in order to go ahead and be able to have room right in the back when we did the, the barn itself.
So, yeah, uh, um, given that's the distance on that, and now is this structure sound, because I see that you had a brace?
I was doing work on that corner on it.
Oh, okay.
While I'm back in there, so I just did that to make sure I wasn't kicking it, it's coming down tomorrow. It was just a, just a brace while.
Oh, okay.
Inside doing some things.
So, the greenhouse gonna stay there?
Yes.
Now, you're just gonna put this in, in basically in front of a few feet away.
It's gonna be an area for her to be able to work all the gardens and etc., and here's what we're really doing.
But she's got lots of plants down there.
So, yeah, you're gonna have to do something about the water runoff, so it doesn't go off your neighbor's property. For sure. I'm less worried about the two feet now that you, this is already there. Yeah, but you're definitely gonna have to do that, and if, and if you can't tie into.
I have a drain that comes down to the, so I can pipe it in, bring it down.
Yeah, that's just, we did with the last place, they tied in all existing things, so there's no.
And they had driver shed that's there is leaving, that, that'll be close, that building, okay.
Are you the neighbor?
Yes, I am.
You are Mr.?
Porter.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Why, you can come up and sit next to Wayne too? We may have some more questions.
So, just a li- a little history too, Mr. Porter has applied for a moving permit to put a pole barn out his.
Oh, you're next one?
Yes, I am, yes.
So, you understand that if this, if this structure is approved the way it is, you won't be able to build an eight feet or ten feet of that structure on your property.
Right, I have, right now, the property, or my building will be ten feet away from it, the property line.
The property line. Okay.
Yeah, no, he's gonna be coming to the board for a, uh, lot be- because our, our code has a minimum lot coverage.
Coverage.
Or minimum lot, not coverage, he's still under the coverage, it's minimum lot size. So, he's under the half an acre to be able to subdivide, because it's gonna be a dwelling.
Oh, so you're coming in for a subdivision?
Yes.
But subdivisions gotta go to the planning board.
Well, no, 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 so it's, it's it's because he's gonna have more than one primary residence on, on. Yeah, he.
I, he's still gotta go to the planning board.
Yep.
Yeah, that's still a planning board, it's gotta do a site plan review.
I'd send, send him here, he has to get, he's.
He has to get stuff variance first, then go back to the planning board, gotcha. I could just.
Residence on a single property?
It's not, they're not primary, it'll be a secondary residence.
Doesn't matter.
And they're not, and it, and it's not, um.
Residence is residence.
Right, and, and, and there, we're, we're only calling it a residence because he wants utilities to live.
You gotta get your issue CFO? And it's a residence.
Yes. Yeah, so it would be a secondary.
So, you're gonna have two principal structures on one property, so let's you gotta get the variance for one thing, and then go through a.
Yeah, you gotta be able, in order to get us, in order to have a second, right, so that's, that's next month.
Yeah. Blue daggles.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, there was some discussion earlier about, you don't have a problem with this?
No.
Just, now you got on record. Any more question?
No, once I seen, same thing, once I was down there and I seen that that other attached structure was to what, it looked like it was coming about the same spot, then I was just concerned about that other little building that was, be right on top of it, but if that's leaving, and the next thing you wanna build is over further.
Yeah, and like I said, the, the approximate to the other building, cuz that makes it a lot closer um, to that little building, cuz it's one thing to have it twenty feet away from here. You can see a shadow of that building, this would bring it right down next to it, that would be too close.
Yeah.
But that building's coming down, is there a demolition?
It's not coming down, it's moving to, uh. If I get approval to put the pole barn garage up.
Alright, so there's a problem, cuz right now, that's there.
Right, and that, they, they originally wanted to come in together, but because his had to go in front of the planning board first.
So, what's the distance between the ends of this and that existing building? You can't say it's not gonna be there, especially if it's still gonna be there, and possibly will stay there.
It's physically from the building.
To the property.
To where your, where your proposed building is.
Well, I'm gonna figure, spend maybe twelve feet.
It'll be twelve, it'll be twelve, have, it, it, you're talking the structure.
A little yellow.
My addition to his existing.
Shed that's there.
That shed there.
Twelve feet. But, but that's, but that's like at a ninety degree angle, it might be a little further, cuz it's, it would be angled.
So, we'll be right next to it, it's gonna end before that actually starts.
Yeah.
Okay. They are kinda off.
Yeah.
Centers down there.
Yep.
Oh, so in other words, you're thinking, you're gonna be taking this building down?
Yeah, but it's not coming down.
It's not coming down, but it, that building is actually going to be further towards Francis Shores than the end of the new lean-to structure.
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's maybe.
Right, we can't dictate removing his building.
No, no, no. He's, no, the existing building, the existing structure that's on his property is actually kitty corner to the where it starts here, and this one's gonna end back here, so they're not they're not next, they won't be totally next to each other.
No, but they gotta be more than ten feet apart anyway.
Yeah, they're.
Right.
Yeah.
Twelve, thirteen feet, cuz it's right, it's right on the, the maximum distance you can have from these, which is ten, ten feet.
Okay.
Cuz.
Alright, alright, okay.
And then if he puts the gutters on it, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Take difference.
Well, like I said, two different issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as, there's gonna have to be tough to do the water control. If the gutters on that, and then if you put it to the drain, then there's no water running someplace else, yeah. Cuz there's no place for water to go down there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just went through.
When you come in on Wednesday, just, just that drawing that you gave me, can you just add some kind of downspout to that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright.
I think that's the same one that I, you have, right? This is the one that I have behind there with it.
Yep, yep.
I'll add the gutter to it, downspout to, to underground, ground drain.
Great, yeah, let's throw it down.
Show me a motion, then we impose this part of the.
So, I'm gonna explain you what happens next, so there's two parts here. One is we accept the, um, application as a stance. In this case, we're gonna add the, uh, thing about the, this house, and you've already, you've already talked about that part there. Then we vote on the application being. Right, then we actually vote on whether to get the variance or not. It's, it's the government, so that's what we do. But, that's, people get confused, we just voted on, but no, we didn't vote on, we put on one part of it. So, I always explain that to people, cuz it's a little confusing just to watch it.
I was, I was at a, a, a hearing for an, an expansion we're doing up in New Hampshire, and of course, they brought everybody in by the bus, so. I do understand.
Okay, alright.
And one of the things that has, in the past, we would have two meetings. You would have to come here for the public hearing, but New York State law.
Yeah, there's timeline.
Has changed it, so it's all being pushed into one thing, so. It'll be.
Questions.
Yeah, and then we could adjourn.
And then we can adjourn it.
Okay, so, we have a motion to accept the application with the stipulation that, uh.
I'll make that motion, second.
On favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Okay. Diane, you wanna start us off?
Uh, we accept, it's, oh, I'll make a motion that we accept the.
No, we did, that, yeah, now there's, now it's the.
It's our questions. No, think again.
You're just a.
I usually do that.
She usually does that. Now, you gotta, oh, you gotta put the.
No, they've done that, now we gotta vote on the variance. Yeah, we did.
All right, Linda, Linda moved to accept the application, and I seconded it, we all voted on it.
Okay, all right, no.
Normally, I start first, but now I'm the chairman, so I shouldn't.
All right, I'm doing the criteria, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have a criteria that we have to go through, so, um, it's whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. I suppose it could be, but I don't look at, on it as a, a big problem. Uh, what an undesirable, undesirable change in neighborhood character or the nearby properties, no, that's not. Whether the request is substantial. I, no, I think it, it, it doesn't matter. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, no, sounds like it's gonna be kind of interesting. Definitely, and if, I, uh, your wife is gonna like it. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, they all are, but I don't look upon it as a, a big problem, so I would be in favor of the variance.
Whether the benefit can be achieved, other means feasible to the applicant, um, you could build on the other side of the building, or another location of the building. Uh, but in this case, because there's an existing structure already in that same range, I don't think it, that has any major effect on it. Undesirable change in neighborhood character and neighborhood properties, no, whether it's substantial, substantial. It is substantial because you're way, you're eighty percent of the, uh, um, minimum amount allowed. Uh, whether requests have adverse physical environmental facts with the proper drainage and stuff, absolutely not. Uh, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, yes, and most of these are, uh, but I vote in favor of the variance.
Diane Horni.
Uh, whether benefits can be achieved by other means feasible to applicant, no. Uh, undesirable change to the neighborhood, definitely not. Whether the request is substantial, no, there, it's only a small building. Whether the request has been adverse, physical or environmental effects, no. And whether it's difficulty is self-created, anything you do in answer, it's a self, but I accept it, and I vote yes.
Chris Singer?
Uh, well, the benefit can be achieved by other means, she's older than the applicant. You know, as, as others said, technically, yes, but since there's already something there very similar. Um, I, I think it fits in line. Undesirable change to the neighborhood and character of nearby properties, it's really not. Whether the request is substantial, the footage amount is substantial, but it falls in line with what's already existing on the property. So, that's fine. Uh, will it have an adverse or physical environmental effect? No, as long as the gutters are on there. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, as everybody said, I don't know why they have that question in there, because almost all of them are. And I, I vote yes, that the variance could be granted.
Jesse Halli.
Whether benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, it could lean to go on the other side of the building. Uh, undesirable change in neighborhood character or nearby properties, no. Whether request is substantial, the variance is substantial, but the addition in itself is not and the variance is exactly the same as what already exists. Uh, whether requests will have adverse physical or environmental effects, as long as there are gutters and drainage added, nope. And whether alleged difficulty is self-created, yes, they all are. I vote for favor.
Right, and granted, you'll get an official letter in the mail saying, good to go.
Um, also, I think we should make sure it's, it's said that the variance is accepted with the conditions that.
Yeah, we've got that.
So, yeah.
He's agreed to it, so that's all I'm.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it very.
Yeah, the pictures helped a lot.
Yes.
As I say, just that by itself, um, without an existing, and this is common down, there's existing stuff all over the place.
Go with that.
Oh, yeah. Well, don't worry, they could have been raising your assessment more all the time.
Right, so what kind of birds you got in here?
Well, see, they lived in my wife's part of the garage, so the garage storage shut, we had barn swallows down.
Ah, okay.
They aren't taking to it, because, but the whole idea was, I was gonna put the lean-to of the roof up.
Sure.
And Joe worked with me, and he knew we had come up with this process, so when I came up to go ahead to apply to get it turned down, I handed him the other one for birdhouse, because that way I could get started. And I think that, you know, this. And I think that, you know, this, it's really gonna be.
Are they?
Comfort area in there, you know.
Have they ta- ta- attracted to it or they ignored it completely?
They're around the barn letting me know they're mad the doors.
But actually, we have barn spiles that's underneath porches here, here.
And it's nice that we have them and working them so that they're even nesting underneath the docks, down by the lake.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Really, cuz there's, there's, there's barn spalls and then there's. Another one, I sense they call them house swallows what they are, but um, barn spalls generally be inside the building. And the other ones are on the outside of the building a lot of times, that's probably what you have here. And they eat bugs, oh, they're great for eating bugs.
We, we just sit out to the lake and enjoy them, eat them.
When I mow my fields, they're right behind me, the little few swallows right behind me, but it's like. How do they involve to know if I run a tractor, they're buying me.
They hear it.
Yeah, they do, they know there's bugs flying.
Very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. It's very nice to see.
It's been a long, long time. I, I can remember when you had that accident, I thought, that poor guy.
You know, like they said, I, I have few weeks in pains.
That comes with age, dear.
Enjoy a very hot shower to be home. Later on Wednesday, so if you wanna find it, anytime.
So we don't have any meeting us last summer, do we?
See you next, well, Mister Porter.
So I move, we um, have discussion on, what's her name? It's Shoki, but I knew.
Carol, Carol, Carol Anne, Carol Anne Joki, now, the, the, did it say there were two applications?
Yeah, the other one.
Okay.
It's, it's. Move along.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
So we've already talked, we already got a letter saying that there, there's no conflict of interest.
Yes.
So that was the only legal.
Yeah, Sheila.
Could serve up.
Yeah, I got the email that came back that from. Okay, yeah, with the other application, we felt that it wasn't a good fit.
November?
No, yeah.
Okay.
I don't sell.
But I guess that Sheila's gone. Well, spouse of somebody else, we're, we're ruling based on what they say.
And according to Christopher, what Joe wrote, what's in the email, that there is any bias really in what's going.
There's no legal conflict.
No.
According to Sheila, well, we had for a number of years, we had Jim Smooth as a board member and Bonnie Smith as a town clerk.
Yeah, but that's different, he's not, they're not ruling on one other person's opinion, this case we are, so that's the reason I brought it up. Cuz I know in the court system, they wouldn't hold up, but.
Yeah, it says, you know. Well, as long as we don't lead to another divorce.
Yes, for the alternate, so.
So we could notify.
So I, I vote for her approval.
Yeah, I, shall you, shall we make a motion?
Yeah.
And vote for.
So somebody make a motion?
To accept the, the application of.
Carol.
Are you pronouncing it last?
Joki.
Joki. As the assistant, is our.
Is the alternate.
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 I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Now you can sleep, okay, Janice, that you're off. At your second hand retired.
I move, we close the meeting.
We have to do the minutes, gotta. They were just little short ones.
Getting the obsession.
I move, we accept the meeting, I accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
All favor? I move, do we close the meeting? All favor?
Aye. Are you doing any traveling or wandering in June?
Me? No.
I don't wander anywhere.
I don't want, um, um, I gotta set a date for caucus.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I gotta get ahold of Fiegles and see, I'm looking at either June uh, twentieth or twenty first or.